As Board Chairman of Oasis Jail E.T. Center in Northeast Florida, I would be remiss if I did not come to speak loudly in support of HRO 296. I have called Jacksonville my home for the majority of my life, during which time I have been fortunate to be surrounded by people who support and treat me as equal, but just to them, I am just that, an equal. Sadly, this is not the case for many of our citizens who call Jacksonville home. A person should be employed on nothing less than the merits of how well they do their job, or not be refused to rent and maintain residency based on anything less than their ability to pay their bills. It astounds me that anyone could be refused something as simple as being serviced by a place of business for any reason other than not being a good patron. Unfortunately, Duval County has individuals who can be dismissed for all of those reasons. Recently, a member of this council stated that she had concerns the bill will enhance the rights of alternative lifestyles at the expense of rights of Christians whose sense of morality conflicts with those lifestyles. Blanket statements of morality expressed in religious ideology are not reasons to refuse people basic rights, specifically when the language is simultaneously being used to guarantee those people who oppose said rights. It is your responsibility and your duty to, by doing for some, so should you do for I would urge each of you to consider everything that's been said tonight, and consider doing what is just, what is fair, and what is equal. Find out, does your decision come down to something as mundane as a personal preference on a moral position, or does it come down to a decision on what is just and fair? Please support HRO 296.
Unlike many people here, I am actually a fourth-generation Jacksonville native. My great-grandfather moved here during the teen, I believe. I'm very, very lucky to be here. Unlike many people, I actually, I moved away to college, I went to a university in South Carolina, and I moved back afterwards. I love being in Jacksonville. My parents live 10 minutes down the road, which I love. My uncles, who have been together for more than 20 years, live a block from them. I love that I'm close to my family. I actually, before this, I recently graduated from law school. During law school, I was fortunate enough to work on Audra Brennan's campaign for mayor. During that time, I actually met a few of you and seen many of your speeches. Almost every single speech, and I would be willing to wager that every single speech that y'all made, at some point mentioned attracting bright, young, and engaged people to Jacksonville, and maintaining the residency of those who grew up here. Today, you have an opportunity to actually work off of that promise that you made during campaign speeches. This is a bill that will bring people to Jacksonville, and I'm afraid it will, it is a bill that will keep people in Jacksonville. Many, many friends of mine who have grown up here have moved away, friends who moved to New York, friends who moved to San Francisco. A bill like this will help keep people in Jacksonville, and it will bring people here. Thank you for your time.
Mr. President and CEO of the Jacksonville Community Council, JCCI. I live in Mandarin, 12329 Muscaby Drive. JCCI serves as a source for trusted local information and local research, and I want to share some of the research you may have heard mentioned a little bit earlier tonight, but some others that hasn't been, have not been mentioned, that I think is relevant to these proposed changes in the Human Rights Ordinance. In 2006, we were asked to look at economic development concerns in our community. We did a study we called "Attracting and Retaining Talent." A major barrier identified in that study, a major barrier to economic expansion and bringing talented people, was the external and internal perceptions that Jacksonville was not seen as welcoming to diverse individuals. That work introduced the concept of the creative class, which we heard referenced earlier, noting that a key factor shaping 21st century economic futures is the ability of a community to attract and retain people within a, within the creative class. And Richard Florida, who did this work, noted that the gay population is a dependable indicator of environmental factors of tolerance, openness to diversity, and lots of urban-oriented amenities that are critical for attracting world-class workers. At the same time that we did this study, Jacksonville ranked 47th out of 50 cities on Richard Florida's Diversity Index. In 2007, as you have heard, JCCI Forward, which is our Emerging Leadership Development Initiative, looked closely at the status and impact of our LGBT community, and they learned much about what was happening. That triggered some more work. The Human Rights Commission contracted with us in 2008 to measure the extent of discrimination, specifically in those areas that are covered under federal protection, under civil rights legislation, in the same ways that race, color, national origin, sex, age, religion, marital status, or disability are protected. Are we seeing discrimination in housing, in employment, and in public accommodations? We found that it was remarkably easy to see discrimination existing in Jacksonville. We also found that Jacksonville's current ordinances did not protect against this discrimination. Last year, we focused on economic development again. We looked at how we could have a regional approach to emerging from the recession. We saw, and I'm quoting here from the report, "The region continues to struggle in acceptance of diversity and protections for minority rights. Concerns include a lack of progress in race relations, religious intolerance, and the failure to prevent discrimination in employment and housing based on sexual orientation and gender identity at the local and state level. These concerns can hinder efforts to attract corporate headquarters and a highly skilled workforce." In short, our economic future, it will be shaped by our ability to attract and retain the highest quality workforce. How we treat our LGBT residents shapes both internal and external perceptions of Jacksonville, especially among the creative class, whether or not they are gay. Discrimination against LGBT residents now currently legal occurs and is easily documented.
Mr. Moore, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I am very proud to be here tonight and see a lot of my friends, my family, my fellow workers, and all the people who have been here tonight telling you about this matter. I am here to support 296 because I believe it's the right thing to do at the moment. Many people have spoken about the fact that this will bring a lot of jobs into the city. As a matter of fact, the gentleman just before me gave you a slew of data. I want to talk to you about how do you feel, what's in your heart, what's in your mind? I know that many of you were children once, and you probably, some of you were taller or shorter than others. Have you ever felt discriminated upon because you couldn't throw a baseball, you know, very far? I want you to think about that time. I want you to think about that discrimination that you felt when you were kids or you were growing up, that makes you now who you are today, leaders in this city. I want you to go back to that. I don't have enough data, or more than enough data, to tell you, you know, why this should be, you know, passed. I just want to tug at your heartstrings, to feel like a human being, and feel for others, not just for the law, not just because it's, you know, and I want to be proud of Jacksonville once again. I want to be, I came here 22 years ago. I came here to die to this city because I had a disease that was killing me, but I found people here in Jacksonville that helped me get over it, to help me survive. I'm a survivor, I am a fighter. And I want you to think of that. And I'm here because I want to fight for this, and I want to make sure that you can fight as well for this to be a law and that it will pass. I want to be proud of Jacksonville. I had the opportunity to leave Jacksonville many times. I've had family in other parts of the country, but I've come back because I want to see Jacksonville be like one of the big cities that I used to live in, you know, where everyone was looked upon and everyone was cared for. So I want you to think about that, think with your heart as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. And Councilman Jones' district. I stand before you as a citizen, as a taxpayer, as a Duval County resident, as a Duval County landlord. I also stand before you as a City of Jacksonville firefighter, who pulled you out of the fire. I stand before you as a City of Jacksonville paramedic who saved your life. I stand before you as a Coast Guard Reserve who renders aid when you're pulled out of the water. I stand before you as a board of directors on a ministry for people who don't want to be gay. I stand before you as a college educator. I stand before you as a busy man. I have faced discrimination. I'm speaking in support of this bill. I was fired from my first ambulance provider in the 90s. I was told what the reasons were by some fellow employees. I went back and talked to the employer, addressed it, got my job back immediately. After the second attempt, I left. I went to Clay County Fire Rescue. I was employed the day that I was supposed to get hired. They said, "I'm sorry, City, excuse me, the county commissioners, you're, do not command, the county commissioners have only allowed nine instead of 10." "That's interesting, there was people with a last name that was an S and a T, how'd you get to R?" They would not give me an answer. I got a phone call, required a phone call from somebody who said that that chief had called around an app about what my interactions with other men at the fire station would be like. I did not get hired that day. I called my father vehemently opposed to homosexuality, vehemently, and my father, who does not agree with homosexuality, said, "Fight." He recognized an injustice, he recognized inequality, and I did fight, and I got hired, and enjoyed three years at Clay County Fire Rescue before coming to Jacksonville. During that time, I was offered City of Jacksonville first time, and believe it or not, I turned it down, because then I did not want to work for what I considered to be a racist and big department. I am proud to say that I think very highly of my fellow firefighters. However, my first fire at the City of Jacksonville was discrimination. My first fire was when my den mother, my lieutenant said, "See those chiefs? They're there to see you. They're there to see the gay guy." I've had numerous fires of discrimination, and I will continue to fight them. I get called to rescue and respond to calls every single day without regard, and I render aid and help people every single day without regard to their beliefs, without regard to their actions, or maybe even honestly what put them there. And I have my own opinions, but I have to render aid and care for them indiscrimin, indiscrimin. I'm asking for you guys to rescue me. I'm asking for you guys to rescue all of us. Just while your time is expiring. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I will not be long. I had a 10-minute dissertation, found out I had three minutes. Okay. I have worked with homosexual, and found that I've worked with lesbian. I've had two businesses, and I've hired homosexual. To me, they've always left it at the door, or I had a problem with them, but they've always let, let me alone. Of course, there are three sides of this issue, the civil rights factor, the human factor, and the theological factor. For your benefit, I'm cutting this short. From a moral and biblical standpoint, honor counsel, I leave this with you. I feel deep down inside that this is the nose of the camel under the tent, and my prayer is that you will make the right decision and vote in them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. United President for the Faculty Union at the Florida State College of Jacksonville. I'm reading a prepared statement from my executive council. United Faculty of Florida at the Florida State College of Jacksonville supports Bill 296. While our full-time faculty are protected from being arbitrarily fired by our contract, they are not protected when they go out in the community at large. Furthermore, our students, staff, and adjunct faculty are not protected by our contract, nor our potential employees. Passage of this bill will help us attract the highest quality applicants to our city. In order to create our, create our colleges and safe learning and working environment that we're all in our union, we, the officers of the United Faculty of Florida, FSCJ, call upon the City Council to reject all forms of discrimination and to pass this bill.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here to request that you vote yes for this amendment to the, for this ordinance. And to me, it's a civil rights issue. We should not discriminate against anyone, and I believe that there is blatant discrimination. And I believe that you all are the voice of this community, and it is our job to communicate to you what our desires are on various important amendments, and therefore, I request that each of you vote yes. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Tonight, it always says, I never know what I'm gonna say, but tonight, 290, oh, voila! I approve gay rights 100%. My nephew is gay, my stepson is gay. Now, let me tell you a few things. I'm glad I had the time to observe my gay brothers and sisters tonight, and one thing I observed, they're taxpayers. The next thing I observed, they're very productive people, and when you knock them down, they get up and come back. I know it's that. Now, we'll tell you this, and I know this for a fact, gay people are not weak. I have met some physical gay people, and I did not want to fight them. They had a guy out of the race named Bennett. Bennett said, "I brought my womanhood and picked up my manhood," and straightened you out, and you didn't want to mess with Bennett. I'm gonna tell you that right now. So heterosexuals, it tickles me when they say, "Yeah, I'm gonna go over there and pick on this gay guy." And then the gay guy put a couple of knots on his head, and he figured out, said, "See what, see, all it is, we living in the age of darkness," you know, and I don't fear nothing, I'm gonna tell you right now. That's why I love adversity, and I love to speak on strong issues. Now, as far as the pastors and some of your upstanding churches, you know, they walk with a little, but they're gonna say, we're gonna judge. Well, who you fooling? Because I want them to answer me one question. Who of them walks in the footsteps of Jesus? Let me meet this individual, please. I said, "Walk in the footsteps, where'd you stand?" Because that would be the most revolutionary thing you could do, would be walking in the footsteps of Jesus. And I haven't seen, I've never met anybody qualified to walk in those footsteps, as far as religion is concerned. But I love tough issues, I love to fight, and I'm guilty of a grim brush, you know? I'll admit it, I'm guilty. And they can invite me to the party, I will be the gay parade. I'm not wearing a rainbow. I won't wear a rainbow, just like I won't wear a Jaguar football player name on my match. It's a post-Rockwell praises, neck is on name, Eddie Davis gonna be on the back. If they let me play for four downs, I'll rack one of them up to 65 years old, guaranteed. See you later. I'm a man.
The preponderance of evidence has displayed that you all should have acted long time ago, you wouldn't have to go through what you're going through tonight. We hear a lot of statements. I heard just now, a moment ago, about thieves and preachers. Preachers are thieves too, and my people would not be in the position they're in if it wasn't for so many black preachers thieving, that much. But I look at tonight's, it's different from most. I'm about the same age, man just left. 48 years ago, I was given some rights, but I waited a mighty long time before I got them, and these people are waiting much longer. So it's time for you all, cities across America, and I think one day the Supreme Court in Sault Ste. going to prove it. Somebody's gonna take it to them with these states letting people marry, but the Supreme Court is conservative, conservative as they are. They're gonna, okay, so treat the people right. The way I was discriminated with my old age now, a high school education that I got was equivalent to a fourth grade, and that was a detriment to me. And if you deny these people, so many of them, it'll be a detriment to them, so do the right thing by them. I see some of you squirming, some of you so wrapped up in the Bible and Genesis and all, just so many people, that's a comic book. And now y'all opening these chambers up for people to come and pray, but what about my atheist friends? Will they have that opportunity to come in here? My dad and gas been friends. You gonna have a day for them to celebrate? They might like a new partner. Do them right. Mr. President, I don't know without being able to say for the public comment, but it's open to the mayor.
Mr. Jackson, can you stay in front of the microphone? We have an emergency thing.
It's open to the mayor, and I'm distributing nationwide, so I didn't want to start doing that before you all could get it in a blue. And I read it.
There's time's up, thank you.
Councilman Jones' district. I'm proud to live in Councilman Jones' district, and I'm here to speak to you not only as one of your citizens in support of Bill 2012-296, but also as an educator who influences the lives of others, who makes a, who has to help students make a difference in their lives. I was recently at an event at the school I teach in, in which, unfortunately, Councilman Brown, who's not here, gave a speech and said that what matters in life is that dash that is between your birthday and your death date. That speech is why I'm speaking tonight, because that dash is significant. I grew up here in Jacksonville. I lived here from the time I was five until I was 20, and I moved away. I moved away because of the bullying I faced, because of the harassment I faced on a daily basis, because of who I was perceived to be, and I left, not wanting to come back, but I have come back, and I have come back stronger, and I'm here to fight. Thank you.
And I'm here today to speak in favor of 2012-296, the bill introduced by Councilman Moore Jones. I moved to Jacksonville over 13 years ago. Where I previously lived was in Kansas City, Missouri, and I came to Jacksonville for a job opportunity. I want to let you know that I had left a city that had passed protections around sexual orientation in 1993. These are not, you know, new ideas or new concepts, these are things that other cities have done all over the country. And in fact, from research that I've done, of the top 70 most populous cities, Jacksonville, Memphis, Corpus Christi, the only ones that have made some effort to pass ordinances like those. So I think it's really time for us to do that here in Jacksonville, and that's why I'm speaking and urging you to support the bill. I think lacking these protections that hundreds of other cities have passed, some version of them, put us at a disadvantage, and I really hope that we can put ourselves back on our footing by passing this, and we'll draw people to Jacksonville, we'll send a clear message that Jacksonville is a place that's open for business, and that values diversity and all of its people. I also have other perspectives on how damaging discrimination can be. I happen to work for the same place that I moved down here 13 years ago, which is the Jacksonville Area Sexual Minority Youth Network, also known as Jasmine. At Jasmine, we work with gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender, and questioning youth ages 13 to 23, and we regularly hear from them, their struggles, of how they interact in Jacksonville, and the discrimination that they face, those difficulties, and I want to, I want us as a city to try and remedy some of that. I want those young people to grow up in a city where they know they feel valued and accepted and respected, and so that they feel that they can stay here, so they can form their families, stay with their loved ones, so they don't have to move away to some other place where they can be who they are. So again, I really want to encourage you to support this bill, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Homowner, resident for 16 years, bachelor's degree, active volunteer, person of faith. I didn't intend to move back to Jacksonville because of what I faced in high school, because of the violence and taunting, because I knew this city did not have ordinances in effect. I moved here to protect my little sister after college. I got a job as a professional, and I maintained a residence in Jacksonville with the hope that this day would come. No one should face discrimination based on a characteristic that they cannot change, or that they cannot change the perceptions of. I have been perceived to be many things, and many different jobs, and I don't care that my voice is wavering because I'm proud to be here. The criteria for maintaining a job should be, and always has been, whether or not you can do the job, and whether or not you maintain professionalism. Professionalism is not being discussed here tonight as to what that is required. All I am asking is that I am being judged, as Dr. Martin Luther King said, by the content of my character rather than my appearance. This bill, moving forward, spreads equality, and it does not harm the religious beliefs of anyone, and it is my belief that religious organizations are exempt from doing anything against their fundamental beliefs. Therefore, I'm asking you, let me be proud of Jacksonville, and let me and all these other people who would like to move here be proud of Jacksonville, and not have to face this at my work every day. Thank you.
I'm asking you to support Bill 2012-296, which will provide equal rights in the workplace for our LGBT community. It's also a chance to enhance Jacksonville's reputation as a progressive community that welcomes all well-educated and productive people into our workplace. A good friend of mine is a college-educated person and wants to work hard, and she's transgendered. Because her state ID card shows her biological sex of male, makes her background checks difficult, and interviews more complicated, and she's often not hired due to her perceived conflicting information. In the occasional job she has obtained, she is in overqualified positions, resulting in lower pay and typically no benefits. She struggled not making enough money to afford housing and other necessities simply because of her negative perception of transgender, as well as the difficulty of explaining her gender identity to prospective employers. Other friends of mine fear losing their jobs by going into work and simply being who they are, lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender. Some aren't even able to stand up here tonight and display who they are or speak their minds unfold, or even show up to the city council meeting for fear of being negatively perceived, judged, or potentially fired for who they are. We all need jobs so that individually, or as a thriving city, we can sustain. Jacksonville is losing out on so many talented LGBT people who decide to leave the community because they'd rather go to where they're more welcome and where their employment is not in jeopardy. While my employer does not discriminate against me for my sexual orientation, several employers do. Sex is a protected class, and I'd like to see parity in the LGBT community to expand the scope of protected classes to also include sexual orientation and gender identity or expression. I urge you to support 296 so that Jacksonville will be known as a place of equality for everyone despite our orientation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. This lawyer is here. In April of 1993, a partner of 40 years, and I found ourselves in Seattle, Washington, and we were in a bar, and we're having, the television was on, and it said that in Duval County, Florida, the school superintendent endorsed a ban on Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs. And I lost the rest of it because I just found it incredulous that here I was, as far away from Jacksonville as you could get. far away from Jacksonville as you could get, and they were talking about what was happening in this community. And the comment, the person that was talking stopped, and all he said was, unbelievable. Okay? So here, after listening to some of this stuff tonight, I, it's your chance not to make Jacksonville unbelievable again. Please pass this, Lord.
Tonight, I am speaking in support of Bill 2012-296. I'm very fortunate to do what I do here in Jacksonville, and that is, I am a professor of speech at Florida State College of Jacksonville, which means I teach the most dreaded course that anyone can take in college, public speaking. And here we are. So I have learned over the years that the best way to teach the course is to create an atmosphere in the classroom that is open, that is accepting, and so all of the, you know, the responses that the students want to pass out, uh, go away. And so my students know that I have an open door policy. When it comes to my office, they can come to me and talk to me about anything. And in the wake of the media spotlight of all the gay teen suicides that we saw a couple of years ago, I have had numerous students come into my office and tell me stories about maltreatment that they've experienced here in Jacksonville, based on the fact that they were gay. And I realize it's not symptomatic to just Jacksonville, but that's just how it is. And these are stories that will break your heart. They tell them to me with their head in their hands, and they tell me stories of familial rejection, about isolation. And I've also heard some uplifting stories as well, about people that have thought that their family and friends were gonna be close-minded, and then they weren't, and they were so excited. But all of them have one thing in common, they all couldn't wait to get out of Jacksonville. And that is where, to me, this stops being a moral and ethical issue and starts becoming a very real economic and business-related issue as well, because, let me tell you, these are some of the best and brightest students that I have encountered, and they are leaving this city to give their talents and skills to another community. We are not benefiting from them. And I'm not naive enough to think that passage of this bill is going to make Jacksonville a utopia where everyone is accepted, and we have a long way to go as far as that goes. But it has to start somewhere. And if you're sitting out there, whether you're behind me or in front of me, and you think that gay people are nothing, that pedophiles and perverts, and a cancer on society that needs to be excised and treated, I'm afraid there's nothing I can do or say tonight that is going to make you think differently. But if you disagree with even just a little bit of that statement, if you believe that it's possible for someone who just happens to be gay, to be a good business owner, to be a productive member of society, to be kind and intelligent and deserving of human rights, you have to pass this bill. Because at the end of the day, this is not a bill about same-sex rights as far as marriage and partner benefits and all of this stuff, I'm sure that our society will be discussing in the years to come. All this bill says is that in our city of Jacksonville, no one is treated unfairly. And I can't imagine not being in support of that. Thank you.
And I'm the North Florida Regional Coordinator for an organization called Florida New Majority. And I am also a heterosexual, Christianing, and clearly black woman, in, in support of 296. On behalf of Florida New Majority, I would like to thank the city council members for allowing us to speak, allowing me to speak today. Florida New Majority is a social justice organization that fights for equity and fairness for all citizens throughout the state of Florida. Florida New Majority believes that all residents of this great destination, not passed through city, should be afforded equal protection against discrimination, not only on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, gender, disability, familial status, age, or marital status, as the municipal ordinance currently allows, but also on the basis of sexual orientation. As Americans, we believe it self-evident that all, as Americans, we believe it self-evident that all should be equal under the law. Those seeking housing, employment, or public accommodations must not be subject, subject to discrimination because they are lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender. Therefore, we know it is the right time for the city of Jacksonville to reflect the will of residents who value equality, diversity, and fairness, and we call upon all our elected officials to vote in support of this ordinance. Thank you.
City Council, ladies and gentlemen. I appear before you in support of Bill 2012-296. The inclusion of all people to a non-discrimination policy is paramount to the business and economic success of our River City. It is important because of the opportunity to bring business here and to welcome a diverse workforce to Jacksonville. It is important to let the world know that Jacksonville is a welcoming city where discrimination is not tolerated, and that when we say this, we mean business. We mean that business will have a chance to thrive here, and that people, no matter how their families are made up, one man and one woman, one man and one man, one woman and one woman, that they will be able to live, work, and play here in Jacksonville on the first coast. I'm not asking you to agree with any particular lifestyle or any particular sexuality. I'm asking you to provide safety and opportunity for our community to be able to live and to deliver a wonderful city to greatness. To borrow a line from Music Man, "There's some trouble in River City, and it starts with a D, discrimination." You have the power to make this law to allow for people to be free, to be whatever they want to be. People rail all the time about government intrusion, and I am asking you for government to intrude and to remove the discrimination from the policies of hiring, firing, serving, and housing, all of the people who wish to call Jacksonville home. I am a Christian woman, and earlier this evening, Reverend Hamilton brought up my favorite, my favorite verse, which is Micah 6:8, and that is to, to live justly and to love mercilessly and to mercifully and to walk humbly with God. And I ask you, because that is what God's instructions are to us, that's what it says, what does God ask me to do? When I was sitting here listening to everyone talk tonight, I, I couldn't help but remember the time that I first was driving through Selma, Alabama, and I came upon the Edmund Pettus Bridge, and I realized where I was. Bloody Sunday, March the seventh, nineteen sixty-five. When you make your vote, I want you to think about, are you the people holding the bats, or are you the people walking across the bridge? I ask you, not for your permission, but I implore you for your protection for me. Thank you.
You know, democracy truly is not an easy thing. Really isn't. And tonight, we're witnessing part of the continual evolution of a people, of humanity, and of democracy. You know, I think about flag a lot, I think about patriotism a lot. And when I think about what it truly means to be American, that means that if there's something that I vehemently detest, don't agree with, think is moral, think is wrong, that I still have to defend my fellow American, my fellow humans' right. Freedom stops when you infringe upon the rights of another human being, period. The law being what it is, your job is to represent people and to uphold the rights, even the rights that you yourselves personally may think that somebody morally should not have or should not do. It's not your call, it's theirs, and it's your job to defend that. I disagree with the bill on one premise, that there should be no distinctions, black, women. Our laws once said that a black man was free fitness, and that a woman was nothing, that if you didn't own property, that you were nothing and had no blood. That was the law of the land. It was wrong. To not include this right now would be wrong. But I would love to see the day when, I'll give you a quick example. I turned a corner on Old Plank to go home, and there was a car in a ditch, and I pulled the guy out, and went home, got some rope, and pulled him out. I stopped in a Chappelle's about a month and a half later, and the guy remembered me, because it was his friend that got pulled, who was in there, but he was on his way to rescue him too. And he thanked me for doing the right thing. And as, as I was leaving, I was thinking to myself, why should I be thanked for doing something that everyone else should be ostracized for not doing? We need to make the right moral choices because of the right things, period. And when we, when we truly reach that point, then we, we can, you wanna talk about God, you wanna talk about love, you wanna talk about humanity, then we reach that point. But until then, we're small.
Thank you, Stephen.
And I've lived in Jacksonville for about twelve years. You know, it's very interesting to me that we talk about this, it's not being a moral issue or a civil rights issue. You know, slavery was a moral issue. None of us argue that or believe that to be incorrect, because people need denied rights across the board. Child labor laws came about because it was a moral issue, make children slave away and not have rights of their own protected by the government. The civil rights movement of the fifties and sixties was definitely a moral issue. There is no doubt about that, that that was a moral issue. This is a moral issue. I have been gay all my life. I have been in the church all my life. I have listened to scripture my entire life. I have heard of abuse for bad things, I have been, I've heard of, lived in for good things. Tonight is no exception to that. I remember the United Methodist Church, which has discriminatory policies in it, and guess what? We're gonna change that one of these days. The members of that church will change it, just like the nuns are gonna change the Catholic church one of these days, I kid you not. Churches aren't all lockstep. People of Christian faith are not all lockstep on this issue. Now, I've lived a charmed life. I've had wonderful jobs, have had wonderful opportunities in Jacksonville. I've been here for twelve years. I worked for Salzbach Center, the best job I ever had, working with the homeless. I worked for the Florida Department of Health and HIV Prevention for four years. Proud of what I was able to do, going into underprivileged neighborhoods and schools, talking about things that people needed to know, because experience is a dangerous thing for all of us. Over the last five years, I have worked for Harlem Hospice, caring for people in advanced stages of illness, talking to families when they are sick and scared at their most vulnerable points. And no one ever said to me, I don't want you here because you're gay, but let me tell you something. I have a partner. I had to text him tonight and say, is it all right if I talk about you in the city council? Because he is closeted, Republican, Baptist, North Side, fourth-generation Jacksonville, and he is afraid of losing his family, he is afraid of losing his job, he is afraid of losing his church. If anyone knows who I am and who he is, I'm not here tonight talking for my rights, I'm here tonight talking for his rights. I live in this community because he's the person that I love, he's the person that I support, he's the person that I want to spend my life with, but his rights are not safe because it is a moral issue. And each and every one of us are charged by our Creator to do what is right. Christ told us, I give you a new commandment, and that new commandment is to love one another. And nowhere in that scripture does He say, unless they're this, unless they're that, except if they did X, Y, and Z, He said, love one another, and that's the gospel.
Councilwoman Boyer. Again, what I really wanted to do was just do some fact check here, in terms of what we know and what we don't know. First of all, I'd like to take issue with one of my peers who said ten percent of the population. We don't know that it's ten percent of the population. As a matter of fact, the research that I've done would suggest that it's for females, it's somewhere, well, that we can verify, two to five percent for females and four to six percent for males. Okay? It may climb higher, because we may not have people admitting to it as they should, but nonetheless, we can't claim the ten percent. So let's put that one aside a little bit. Now, personal choice, we've heard personal choice here quite a few times. The data just don't support it. The data are very, very clear that there's a genetic component. It is not one hundred percent genetic, but there is a genetic component, and there is also probably a hormonal component that occurs during birth, or not during birth, but during gestation. So there is biology here, it's not choice. We heard complaints about property, that immoral people would be moving into my house. If I live in the house, they can be, if it's a duplex. I have another property over there, immoral people, those homosexuals will be moving in. Well, we better change the current law right now, because unmarried couples have the right to move in. So if you don't go with, if you think that sleeping together outside of marriage is wrong, the law already protects that. So guys and gals, change it, if that's your complaint. We heard someone say that eighty-six percent of the people in Jacksonville believe that it's wrong, and then they tried it us, because eighty-six percent of the people didn't think that it was an issue. Okay? One is a sense that it's wrong, the other is whether they know anybody who has been in fact discriminated against. The fact that you, Councilman Anderson, don't know anyone who's been discriminated against, doesn't mean that nobody has been discriminated against. So using that number as some barometer of discrimination or no discrimination is just sort of silly.
Professor, your time's expired. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.